Good evening. Good evening, everybody. Welcome, welcome to the... Welcome, everybody. Can you hear me? There we go. No? Can you hear me now? No?
I... Now you're on.
Am I on now? Okay. Great. You got me now. Excellent. I can't tell from up here. It's an interesting experience. Okay. Welcome to the January 14th, 2019 council meeting. Thank you all for being here. We were expecting a crowd tonight, and we are not disappointed. So thank you all for being here. We actually normally begin right away with a public forum, but we have an important piece of council business to begin with, and that is to elect our new council officers for the year. This is a rotating role, and so we thank our outgoing president, Mike Clark, who performed admirably and has his last moment in the sun here, and then we will elect our new council officers.
Thank you, Mayor. With my last motions here, I will move to elect Betty Taylor as President of City Council for 2019.
Second.
Does she second her own motion?
I don't know. Someone else can second.
Sure.
All right. There we go. All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Excellent. Congratulations, Betty.
I move to elect Emily Semple as Vice President of the City Council for 2019.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight. Thank you very much and congratulations. I look forward to working with the two of you. And now, we are ready for the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for individuals to speak to the city council on any city-related issues except for those items which have already been heard by a hearings official or are on tonight's agenda as a public hearing. Each person, I am going to cut this back to two minutes because there are so many of you. They're 46, so I'll give you two minutes to speak. When you come to the podium, please give your name, city of residence, and for Eugene residents, your ward if known. The timer and lights indicate the time you have to speak. The red light will indicate the end of two minutes. And I apologize to those of you who have carefully crafted your three-minute speeches. And just a reminder to folks that one way to move quickly through this is if I'll call two names. The second name can sit in the warm-up chair there while the first name speaks, and then that way we can move quickly through this. And as you get through, if there are some of you who feel that you're all representing the same point of view, you can consider shortening your comments since many of you are speaking about the same topic. But I leave that to you. You have the full two minutes. And we will... Oh, and one other just reminder about the courtesy of the room. We ask for no verbal outbreak, outbursts, and no signs in here. You're always welcome to wiggle your fingers in approval when someone says something you particularly like, but please keep it safe and quiet and respectful for all the speakers. Okay. First up, Abraham Ludkey, followed by John Amundson.
Good evening, council members. My name is Abe Ludkey, and I'm a student at South Eugene High School, and I live in Ward Three. Friends and other students from my school were unable to make it tonight because of sicknesses, schoolwork, and college applications. So I'm speaking on behalf of them and the young generation to voice our support for the polystyrene ban. I know personally that thousands of students who eat off-campus in this city use single plastics because it is the most convenient option, and this proposal would change that and have a massive impact with just the youth of Eugene. In addition, while growing up, we have constantly learned about the terrible environmental impact of plastics and its negative effect on wildlife, rivers, and the ocean. So now that the possibility of banning these materials is a reality, we see it as a no-brainer. Cities across Oregon have already banned polystyrene such as Silverton, and several other cities have followed Eugene's plastic bag ban. Eugene needs to step up to the plate and ban polystyrene to continue being a leader in the state on environmental issues. This proposal is completely feasible and should be implemented as soon as possible, which can happen at the work session this Wednesday, which we urge the council to utilize. Thank you. Good evening.
Thank you. John Amundson, followed by Terry McDonald.
Mayor Venice, city councilors. My name is John Amundson, and I'm a fellow with Environment Oregon, a statewide citizen-funded environmental advocacy organization. I live in Portland. In November, I had the opportunity to testify in support of Councilor Emily Semple's proposed ordinance and had the chance to encourage you to schedule a work session on single-use plastics as soon as possible, and I'm delighted that the work session has been scheduled for this Wednesday because the scale of the problem at hand requires urgent action. As you probably know by now, Americans throw away billions of single-use plastic containers every year, including 25 billion polystyrene or styrofoam containers and cups. Less than 2% of these polystyrene containers are recycled, so the vast majority enter either the landfill or our rivers and streams. This is a huge problem, and it's clear that the people of Eugene want their city to take bold action on plastic pollution by banning polystyrene takeout containers. A broad coalition of local environmental groups, concerned citizens, and over 50 Eugene restaurants have signed on to our coalition letters encouraging a ban on polystyrene takeout containers, and 185 of our Eugene area members have signed a petition letter urging you to ban polystyrene takeout containers. We've also gathered 90 photo petitions and had a guest viewpoint on plastic pollution published in the Eugene Weekly, and I've brought all of these things with me tonight, and I'll leave them with the city manager, if that's okay. Eugene has an opportunity to continue to be a leader on the issue of plastic pollution by banning these dangerous takeout containers and encouraging more sustainable plastic use practices. The city should seize this opportunity to become statewide leaders on plastic pollution by adopting Councilor Semple's ordinance to ban polystyrene takeout containers and reduce our single-use plastic footprint this coming Wednesday. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Terry McDonald, followed by Todd Boyle.
Mayor and councilors, I'm Terry McDonald. I'm the director of Saint Euston DePaul, and I live in Councilor Taylor's Ward. And I need to compliment the city and compliment staff about the marvelous job that you did on putting together the applications for the River Road Land Bank site. We've competed on a number of those activities over the years, and this was the most fully thought-through application process I have ever seen. The neighbors were all fully informed. There was multiple opportunities for citizen input out there, that the opportunities to influence the process by which we determined what the land bank site was going to be used for was clear and above board, and with multiple opportunities for that kind of input, I think you're going to get the best possible product on the backside. Anecdotally, referring to the previous two speakers, the largest recycler of polystyrene in Lane County is Saint Euston DePaul, which recycled 22 tons of recycled polystyrene last year. It would be very easy for us to come up with a way to deal with whatever residual food-affected polystyrene that's in the waste stream and get that recycled without any effort whatsoever. Thank you.
Thank you. Todd Boyle, followed by Adam Kishel.
I'd like to speak on the construction excise tax. And there's, in the big picture of things, there's 36,000 people who live on incomes of less than $1,000 a month, and the construction excise tax of $1 million for the first year would be equivalent to about four units of housing, you know? For example, the Myrtle Wood Apartments, who are public housing, would cost $250,000 per unit. So the low-income housing isn't built any cheaper than private sector housing. So really, it's straining at gnats while swallowing a camel type of thing that we have so much time devoted to that construction excise tax because if you actually build housing for 36,000 people, that would be $10 billion or something. And so really, the scale of this thing is going to continue. There's not a single thing is being done about the low-income housing crisis. And it is a crisis. It is a conveyor belt that is grinding people through the last stages before they get ejected out into homelessness, which is imposing a huge amount of stress, causing family breakups and, you know, runaway kids and all kinds of stuff, alcohol and drug problems. It's caused by the economic stress that people are being pressured under in that bottom decile. So all I'm asking for is that when you, now when you get the CET money coming and you have in the city's general fund, use that money for the lowest decile first. Use that money for the bottom because there's going to be a huge grab, and there's actually a very active doctrine in place right now among many of the low-income housing community that the public money should be spent on every decile of the, who are experiencing affordability problems. That's true, but public money has to be concentrated down in the first decile in order to reduce your costs of dealing with homelessness, reduce the terrible cost on our society that's rippling through the community. Thank you.
Thank you. Adam Kishel, followed by Eric Jackson.
I live in Eugene, South Eugene. Just wanted to express some concerns about the initial response by the Eugene police following the shooting of Charlie Landeros at Cascade Middle School. Early on, the police released very limited information and then directed the public to an investigation that would be ongoing at the state level. I have some problems with the limited information that the state policed, that the Eugene police released that only backed up their side of the story. There were some key pieces of information that were released that I think may have been false. When Lieutenant Jennifer Bills stepped in front of cameras well after Charlie was shot, she was asked directly, was the suspect in custody, to which she replied that the suspect was shot. When asked if the suspect was dead, Lieutenant Bills stumbled for a second and then said that she did not know. I have trouble believing that well after the shooting occurred, the lieutenant did not know the status of Charlie. And while this may seem like a small fact early on, given how little information the public has received directly from Eugene police, I have concerns about these important details this early on. This investigation, I'm sure, will go on the state by independent investigators and by the Eugene police themselves, but we need to get the information out correctly and truthfully, and those kind of potential small slip-ups and misstatements early on can shake the trust of the public. Thank you.
Thank you. Eric Jackson, followed by Cora Jesse Colboy.
Where'd John go? I'm just surprised looking through my right not seeing his face. It was very odd. Council, new president and vice president. Nice to be here again. Haven't been here for a while. Seems like I'll be back quite a bit now. The Campit Highway 99. I would love to continue to explore that concept because there are so many people that don't fit into Pete and Terry's systems. Those that can't handle a break from 10:00 a.m. till 1:00 p.m. daily, every single day. Those that have emotional issues that cause them to be in situations where they need a little more care and kid gloves. That one of my guys said to me, what do you mean, Jackson? I thought you gave 17 chances. I was like, you're such a jerk, you're right. Because I do, because that's how many chances you need, and you need more than that because anybody at the lowest tier, Todd's lowest decile, the bottom decile, the lowest 1% of us, those people need constant opportunity for hand-up. They can't be 86ed from a program because they acted up at a time. They need to be treated with kid gloves, and behaviors have to be seriously considered. We need another opportunity for self-governance. We need an opportunity for a program that I've been working with you guys talking about for almost a year now, at least since April, since the budget meetings. Please consider it, and please communicate and try and talk to us about it because you guys seem to be the final decision-makers in the county's inability to have proper land use. So I hope that you will consider us, and without a doubt, Charles's death was horrifying.
Thank you. Cora, followed by Karen Knudsen.
I live at Camp 99, and it's the first stable home and space of my own that I've had in three years. I've been scared to... I've been scared to sleep most nights up until coming there and have used drugs many times to stay awake just to stay safe. I have at times fallen asleep and not been safe where I fell asleep with the people who I was around. And almost every single day, pretty much every single day, my life was spent struggling to reach base stability, find a place to sleep that night, and secure my belongings. I was almost always in a hurricane of efforts to get my belongings from the various places all around town that I had some of them placed here or there, and try and get them all into one spot and create a space of my own in the world that I could retreat to and feel like I could re-center and find a sense of self and plan to move forward in my life. Forward momentum was literally impossible for me because of the laws that are prohibiting homeless people from having a safe place to sleep and make a space for themselves in the world. And even though I've had a difficult time finding safety, this is actually still a lifestyle that I prefer. I don't like walls, and I shouldn't have to. I shouldn't have to live my life in the shape of box that others say is okay and normal and acceptable. I prefer a fluid and gypsy-style life. I like a tent. I like being in nature. I like seeing the silhouette of trees at night against the sky through a thin veil of nylon because I'm eccentric and weird. I'm an artist, and it should be okay that I'm that way. There is no space in the entire county where a person can want to live in that alternative way and have a place for themselves. You have to literally own your land in order to live like the lowest class of person lives. It makes no sense whatsoever.
Thank you. Karen Knudsen, followed by Carmel Snyder.
Hello, Mayor and council. Thank you all, Karen Knudsen from Ward Three, and here tonight as the project lead, working with Better Housing Together. As you all know, Better Housing Together is a group of more than 40 local businesses and organizations working collaboratively to address the housing crisis in Lane County. And over the past year, we've been working together to try and understand more of the specifics and the nuance of the crisis that we face, and we appreciate your discussion tonight, observing that sometimes complex challenges require more complex solutions and that our policy sometimes needs to be nuanced to move us closer to lasting positive impact in these challenges that we face. So we appreciate the fact that so many of the points from your work session tonight in discussion of the construction excise tax observed the fact that the housing crisis we face has many layers, that it is not a simple one-solution challenge that we face, and that we need to think carefully about how to leverage all of the capacity in this community in order to provide better for everyone who calls this home and wants to make a future here. Council asked a few specific questions about CET, and one that kept coming up that I just wanted to offer some thoughts from. We've heard a lot and learned a lot this year about construction excise taxes, how they've been implemented in other communities, and how they've been leveraged to generate better outcomes. And in moving forward with a construction excise tax that also tries to do as much as possible to not just increase the cost of housing for everything that would have that 1% added to it, but also bring that housing along in this process and create more opportunity in the future for more housing affordability. What we've learned in those conversations is that having a CET helps a community to argue for other funding, helps this community to position itself as one that is committed to providing affordable housing and to qualify for other federal and state grants. So thank you.
Thank you. Carmel Snyder, followed by Robin Bloomgarden.
I'm a little shorter than Karen, but my name's Carmel Snyder. I live in Ward Eight here in Eugene, and I'm here as a representative of AARP. I want to thank you all for your vote in December on administrative actions to help reduce the cost of housing. 2019 is a year of possibilities. In spite of our housing crisis, adoption of innovative housing policies can maintain the city of Eugene as a great place to live for people of all ages, incomes, and abilities to live, work, and play. I participated in the Tools and Strategies Committee as part of AARP and part of Better Housing Together to identify solutions to our housing crisis. Under the direction of a facilitator, the community generated many ideas with near-unanimous support. These solutions would go a long way in solving our housing crisis, in making housing more affordable in Eugene, and to achieve a shared goal of making neighborhoods more inclusive and respectful. This isn't going to be solved easily. It can sometimes be overwhelming. But we will never solve this housing crisis if we do not move forward on the issues that have the most support. For too long, we've let a handful of opponents hold virtual veto power over nearly every decision on Eugene's growth and development. It was good to hear your conversation tonight in moving forward with some of the proposals from the Tools and Strategies, but we'd like to see you look at more of those. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Robin Bloomgarden, followed by Cindy Allen.
Robin Bloomgarden in Clear Surratt's Ward. I have a frog, so you're going to have to deal with it. Counselors, I'm here to speak on two very different issues tonight. First, I'm very happy to see that Emily Semple is proposing a total ban on single-use plastics in Eugene. It's about time that Eugene gets on board with the more than 200 cities and communities across the country that have already done this. The damage done to every living creature by the tiny particles as plastics break down will haunt us forever, especially as we eat those creatures collecting the particles. It never really goes away. It just gets smaller and smaller, which means it will get into the human bloodstream and cross the blood-brain barrier eventually. I would like to see all styrofoam straws, drinks, and clamshell-type containers banned immediately. Secondly, do we really need next-generation 5G for our cell phones? There is much evidence that we do not. 5G proponents plan to use city power poles for free to plant thousands, hundreds of thousands of small but very powerful cell antennas within feet of our homes, schools, and every other building they can irradiate with millimeter-wave radiation. Thousands of pages of research online agree that this is a much higher form of radiation than 4G, and it will make people sick, including brain cancers, infertility, insomnia, and more. If all of you and the city manager knew that each of you could be held personally liable for the health damages caused by allowing this to move ahead, would you be so cavalier about letting it happen without examining the evidence so far about 4G? I hope not, because this may be coming to a courthouse near you. I know you councilors are overworked and underpaid, but if you value your financial health and the health of the citizens of this city, please think more than twice before ignoring this issue. Thank you.
Thank you. Cindy Allen, followed by Karen Kaplan.
Shortly before Christmas, I noticed what appeared to be a new 30-foot pole with an antenna being installed near my home. I talked to the man supervising the project, and he said it was an AT&amp;T antenna. I asked if it was 5G, and he said, not yet, but it will soon be. I asked who owned the property and was told that it was owned by the city. Another neighbor also spoke with him and was given similar information. It appears to be an eWeb pole on city property designated to be 5G. As I understand it, 5G operates using multiple antennas at close distance. No notice was given to neighbors, some of whom are within 75 feet. This is an area of many trees. Our summers have been hot and dry. The wiring on the pole is above ground. I have concerns for fire. I understand that the new FCC regulations regarding the 5G rollout allows above-ground wiring, but that makes no sense to me in this area, especially with the fires that have happened in areas such as Paradise, California. This is not about cell coverage. There's excellent Verizon coverage with 4G. If one wants better AT&amp;T service, a booster for the home can be purchased. 5G is untested technology, and cumulative effects of increased EMF exposure are not being considered. There are multitudes of non-industry-funded studies going back decades showing serious issues. The Telecommunication Act of 1996 was as large as the Manhattan phone book. This massive outdated legislation is trying to dictate regarding 5G. Blumenthal and Esquieu senators gave the FCC a December warning to prove that it was safe, 5G was safe. There was no comment. I don't see how this happened in my low-density city neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Karen Kaplan, followed by Donna Riddle.
Thank you for letting me speak. My name is Karen Kaplan. I live in Ward Three. Thank you for your willingness to have a work session regarding potential actions on single-use plastics in Eugene. I would like to urge the city council to take action on this as soon as possible on this issue and crisis with world plastic use and single-serving items. I am part of a small group of citizens that has been meeting to discuss this. We have uncovered countless cities, counties, and states that are taking bold action in banning styrofoam, implementing plastic ban and straw bag and straw bans, while implementing waste reduction initiatives to help be part of the solution. Portland is decades ahead of us. The potential of food-related styrofoam recycling was mentioned. Styrofoam is extremely toxic in production and contains cancer-causing chemicals like benzene. It should be straight-out banned. One of the most exciting things happening regarding this is in the European Union, which voted to pass and are gearing up for a single-use plastics ban in 2025. With that, one of the goals is overall waste reduction, to reduce single-use plastics that don't have practical alternatives to be reduced 25% by 2025, including to-go boxes as well as beverage containers. Though that is a seemingly lofty goal, the UK has already implemented charging for cups. Starbucks is now charging $0.10 per to-go cup. Waste reduction is critical and provides an opportunity for a real solution in this worldwide problem. I urge the city council, and thank you for holding a work session on this, to fully consider the problem, imposing a ban on toxic styrofoam to focus on additional opportunities to reduce waste by having condiments, straws, and napkins upon request, and being bold by considering charging for disposable cups, ensuring all dining facilities use durable and, if not anything else, at least ensuring that discounts and incentives are offered for refillable beverage containers that is visibly advertised at each establishment. The time is now, and Eugene has an opportunity to be a leader in waste reduction and creating mechanisms to truly address plastics use. I brought you a copy of a magazine that describes the problem, so thank you.
Thank you. Donna Riddle, followed by Cindy Matherly.
Donna Riddle, Springfield, Oregon. I don't know if you are aware that the dawn-to-dawn camp is not really going to be dawn-to-dawn. It's going to... It's going to be open from 3:00 in the afternoon until 11:00 the next morning. That doesn't help the people who work at night. I think we still need a real variety of places for people to be. And I've been out to the camp several times distributing socks and boiled eggs and medical supplies to one of the people who is in a wheelchair, who needs some pretty high-tech stuff to be able to get through each day. And the facility is not going to be accommodating for him. It's just, he needs more space. He needs a home. All of the people need a place to be, to be safe. I would support your excise, construction excise tax if it were going to support single-residence occupancies, if it was going to provide housing for people who make less than $15,000 a year instead of $50,000 a year. We really need a diversity of options for people. I also saw that there are a lot of people here who are supporting Eugene adopting the ban against people, helping people in Springfield. And I think it's horrible, and it makes it harder for me to help people who need help in Springfield.
Thank you. Cindy Matherley, followed by Brennan Matherley.
Thank you, Mayor and city council members, for your efforts to reduce single-use plastics and for the work session that's coming up. A lot of us are really excited to hear the results of that. I hope soon that single-use plastic will be as taboo as indoor smoking. I might repeat that one more time, as taboo as indoor smoking. How awesome would that be? Here's why. Everywhere in the media, we see images of wildlife, marine life, animals injured by plastic. It's a pretty common image these days, and we all know, we've heard it before, by 2050, there'll be more plastic than fish in the oceans. It's hard for us to really, really fathom, as much as we hear that so often. Our beautiful Oregon coast and our waterways are not immune. Our city is also at risk. If we take a look, a little closer look, and walk around, look at our streets, our parks, our riverbanks, our forests, even our front yards, our backyards, we'll see single-use plastic debris and waste. It doesn't ever go away. If we put it in our garbage cans, our recycle bins, it doesn't ever go away, really. It breaks down, as you heard earlier, into microplastics. These plastics use for minutes. I hope that people will think about this. They're used for minutes, and they last thousands of years. The idea that we could actually be the society, the generation, that ends up with plastic in our geological makeup is just unbearable to think about, whereas in years past, we've had all kinds of, millions of years' worth of earth and dinosaur bone. Now, we will be, the legacy that we leave will be plastic, layers of plastic thousands of years from now. We know that there is going to be a styrofoam ban. We hope that really goes through, along with other plastic containers, utensils, straws, stirr sticks, and cups. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Brennan Matherley, followed by Bill O'Brien.
Thank you, Mayor and council members, for letting me speak tonight about the single-use plastics crisis. The polystyrene ban is a big step forward in the right direction. However, I'd like to add the consideration for banning single-use plastic straws. This is bigger than this city, but with its help, we are well on our way to solving our world's plastic problem. Our world's, the ocean contains more than 8 million tons of plastic, and us Americans use 500 million straws every day. And by this time, or if we use this information correctly, then by the year 2050, like was already said, there will be more plastics in the ocean than fish. This is helped a lot by straws, one of the world's top-leading littered plastics. These littered plastics eventually end up in our waterways and can end up in all of our cities and states, lakes and rivers, and the ocean in general. So, I applaud you for this polystyrene ban, but I feel as if we can go forward and just make it a lot bigger than it currently is. I started a non-for-profit organization called Stralis Oregon, and we have stickers, if you guys want two that we have left. Yeah, thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Bill O'Brien, followed by Joshua Carvalho, or Caralco.
Happy New Year's 2021. That seems to be the mantra that everyone seems to be saying around here, because that's going to mean progress, it's going to mean more people. And frankly, I'm not going to be watching it. I might watch it. I might sneak and peek and look at all these beautiful athletes do their thing. But I always have a question in my mind. I'll have to say, how many of them are on drugs? How many are on keratin? How many are living in oxygen tents? How many are doing EPO? How many are doing this? How many are doing that? And, you know, eventually, I'll find out. Some of them have been doing it. Some of them haven't been doing it. I'm losing, the magic of, if you follow track and field in Eugene, we saw a total lack of public process destroying this track stadium that was $30 million that was renovated in 1992, and it was done with your consent. You allowed it to happen. You listened to President Schill, and you did his bidding. And in my opinion, you destroyed your, you've destroyed, you don't know your history, you are not going to have a very good future. That's the way I look at it. And frankly, I see it, like right now, there's a group called, oh, I forget the acronym. They have a letter to your city manager of 32 stakeholders. Oh, yeah, they're a community for compassionate, compassionate community. I think I got it all wrong. But there's a letter to your city manager by 32 stakeholders and to you people as well. And I have yet to see that letter published anywhere. It's circulating around. To make it long, you're doing everything that they tell you to do, and you do great things. Every two steps you do.
Thank you. Thank you. Joshua.
Caracca.
Caracca, thank you. And you'll be followed by Nicholas Knight.
And hopefully, I'll be quick. I just, a couple unrelated things really quickly. During the discussion of CET, Mike suggested that we have, like, this large percentage of people living alone, which was true, but then suggested it was a cultural problem or something, which I thought was a little unfair, because we also had the highest percentage of people, it was a smaller number, but the highest percentage of any of those cities of people identifying as non-family households. So, that was a really skewed way to talk about our housing stock, and I just wanted to point that out. Yeah, it was really a little twisted. But anyway, thanks for the CET. I appreciate what you guys did there. And I wanted to talk about something else you voted on before, which was use of, I guess it's the butterfly lot, there's a temporary use for parking lots. And I thought that sometimes city comes, manager suggests, because we have growing demand for parking, that we actually need to provide more parking. And I think that's kind of actually missing a point, that, like, the massive success of Sunday Streets and events like that have shown that people are more willing to use active transport models, and that we really need parking for seniors and people with disabilities, and the rest of us should get some more money for LTD or bicycles or walking, and that providing a parking lot is just going to make more traffic downtown. It doesn't reduce things by providing more parking. Same thing with Betty's ideas of free parking. That's been shown by, that's not usually a good idea. Actually, free parking is never free. So, that was just something I thought we could be more consistent about our goals when people like the raging grannies and the 350 come, and they talk about climate change, and we talk about, like, concrete, small things that we can do. One would be maybe considering Emily's Day Center. I don't know. There might be a better space for that, but not a parking lot is certainly a reasonable complaint for a whole bunch of other reasons. Thank you.
Thank you. Nicholas Knight, followed by Lon Otterby.
Hi there. I'm a citizen of Eugene. I live in Ward Eight. I'm here to talk about the, what I'm just going to upfront call the murder of Charlie Landeros by the EPD. Since we're at two minutes, just want to run through a little list. First, what needs to be done immediately before anything else. The body cam footage from the police officers needs to be released to the public immediately so the public has trust. It's not even about trust in the EPD at this point, but we need to be able to see what happened. Beyond that, EPD needs to cede the investigation over from their own internal mechanism over to a civilian board or something that the mayor or city council can implement to take this out of their hands. To be quite honest, I don't think a lot of the citizens that know the history of police brutality against activists of color feel comfortable at all with the city taking any position of oversight of their own actions. The popular phrase is, "I'm going to do an oversight of myself and conclude that I did nothing wrong." Great. Lastly, of what needs to be done, the mayor needs to be able to speak up unequivocally and condemn, again, the murder of a citizen in this city. It is not just about talking about, I don't know the details of the investigation yet or what happened, but the police have been shown, the world over, but Oregon as well, that when it comes to citizens, white citizens, I'll say specifically, that there is ability for the police to not kill a person. They can disarm them, they can apprehend them, and usually without any injury to either the person or the police themselves. Yet again, has not happened. Going forward, we just need to tap out alternatives to the police. It is obvious that they cannot be trusted to handle this sort of thing. We need to talk about community, not policing, but community trust and building that ability to solve problems without the use of the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Lon Otterby, followed by Debbie McGee.
Mayor Viness, congratulations, Ms. Taylor, being the new president of this group, and you too, Vice Chair Simple. Well done. Congratulations. My name is Lon Otterby. I live on a small farm in the Mohawk River Valley. I'm speaking to you tonight, though, as a representative and former chair of the Many Rivers Group of the Sierra Club. I wanted to remind you, some of you, of some fond memories that we have of this group. 10 years ago, we came to you with a proposal for a resolution in support of Governor Kowalski's Marine Reserves, Marine Protected Areas. We were losing our near-shore plants, our fish, and our invertebrates, and we needed some good science, and this group stood up and want to thank you for that. It was a great memory. Four years later, we came back to you to talk about not what we were taking out of the ocean, but what we were putting in. And we asked you to ban plastic bags. You stood up, and you did that. We're back again. We're asking you to ban single-use polystyrene in this town. I wish we could ban all the iceboxes, all the flotation devices, everything else that's made out of polystyrene. They use the floral carbons to produce it, which are just so, so damaging to our ozone layer. The consignants of the styrene and the benzene made to produce polystyrene are just causing terrible problems across our group. So, thank you.
Thank you. Deb McGee, followed by Scott Smith.
Good evening. My name is Debbie McGee, and I've lived in the county for 33 years. Polystyrene is a product I believe to be obscene. It is made from oil, which we all know needs to stay in the soil. For our convenience, use, and throwaway, many animals with their lives do pay, turtles, seabirds, whales, to name a few. It would be different if we never really knew, but we do know, and we have the power to do what's right, and I hope you really hear us tonight. Here's something else I have found out. Petroleum-based products, do you know the amount not decomposing in our waste management sites? 30% of space taken up by plastics, and that's a bite. This should be a plan to ban all single-use plastic. This is not a feat that is too drastic. We are at a place wise ones are known to cry. It is really time to change or die. With this ban, if you agree, would you please stand up with me? Thank you.
Thank you. Scott Smith, followed by Robin Smith.
Hi, council. I'm not much of a public speaker. I'll just make this short. My wife and I have lived in Eugene for about four and a half years in Ward Eight, and we're fortunate enough to own our own home. In the last year and a half, we've noticed a rampant uptick of panhandling people on the busy streets. I have nothing against panhandling at all, but I do have a problem with panhandling on busy streets where it could be a hazard. So, I'd like to request that the council consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Robin Smith? No? Okay. Sarah Berant. And Sarah will be followed by Betsy Hitz.
Hi, my name's Sarah Berant. I live in Emily Simple's Ward. As I walk along Amazon Creek in West Eugene, I look and listen for little joys to record in my book of hopeful signs. Lime green and slate-green lichens, yellow willow branches, alder catkins, hooded mergansers, the wing-whirring, plash-landing of mallards on the move, a gray-blue heron poofing feathers against the chill, a long-toed salamander that looks to be just waking after centuries of sleep. Even in this degraded watershed, there's so much beauty my heart aches with it. But as well, I collect evidence for my book of grief. Some days, frankly, the griefs outstrip the joys. I'm not going to mention the tents and various shelters people with nowhere else to go erect along this waterway, because this testimony is about plastics. It's about greasy styrofoam takeout containers, plastic lids and cups, straws and bags, sticky wrappers of every size, plastics caught draping from the creekside tangle. It's about what we leave in our wakes. I grieve the consequences of our throwaway culture, and I worry. I worry because scientists have called plastics, plastic waste, a hazardous material. I worry because microplastics act like sponges drawing other toxins to them. I worry about the long-term implications and impacts of these toxins on fragile aquatic and wetland species, the deer-long-toed salamander, the chirpy Pacific chorus frog. I worry because scientists are worried too. But this community has a glorious opportunity to address plastic waste, and in so doing, to draw attention to one of the detriments of our consumption-based economy. I urge you to enact the ban, not only on polystyrene containers and cups, but to go farther and be bolder. Let's ban single-use plastics for the health of future generations and for the health of our sensitive freshwater ecosystems.
Thank you. Betsy Hitz, followed by Amanda Ligon.
I'm Betsy Hitz, and I live in Emily Simple's Ward. The environmental benefits cited for the reusable bag ordinance enacted in 2013 were, I believe, nearly the same as those for our current topic of banning single-use plastics, starting with polystyrene takeout containers and cups. It should be noted that another environmental benefit was missing from that ban. It should be noted that another environmental benefit was missing from that ban, and that is that plastic is made from fossil fuel, which needs to be phased out entirely in the near future. The carbon dioxide parts per million in 2012, when the reusable bag ordinance was under construction, had just reached the 400 mark, and today we are at 410. Reminder, to have a stable climate, we need to drop our CO2 parts per million to 350. There is another historical fact worth mentioning, since Eugene looks to Portland as an example. Portland banned Styrofoam containers in 1989, 30 years ago. Portlanders knew then that polystyrene does not biodegrade and is not recyclable, that it persists in the environment basically forever, harming animals, especially in our oceans, and that when hot food or drink is in contact with Styrofoam, toxic chemicals can leach into the food or drink and may act as a carcinogen. Banning single-use plastics, starting with Styrofoam takeout containers and cups, is a no-brainer. While we're at it, let's also get rid of plastic straws and stirrers. It is a very low-hanging fruit on the same large tree of actions necessary to curb global warming. As such, it is good practice for our elected leaders in doing what is right for the common good of all citizens. Enacting a ban on single-use plastics serves to normalize the many small and larger actions required to secure a future for all our species. Thank you.
Thank you. Amanda Ligon followed by Loretta Houston.
I'm super nervous, so hi guys, just bear with me if that's obvious. Respected members of the council, my name is Amanda Ligon, and I am deeply proud to call myself Eugenean for over 18 years. I am proud until I hear about incidents like what occurred at Cascade Middle School last Friday. Charlie Landeros, a parent, activist, student, and a non-binary person of color, was murdered in front of their child after allegedly pulling out a firearm on school grounds. Before I begin, I would like to remind us all that none of us know what happened yet. We can speculate, but we have to understand that the process of making assumptions is always based on your own personal biases and experience. It's important to unpack these, even if they were given to us by society and don't seem to reflect our true values. I am in training to be a therapist, and part of this includes learning about how to work with diverse populations. Psychology, much like the fields of police work, has a long history of being complicit in perpetuating the systemic oppression of people of color. By exploring my own subconscious biases, I'm working to become the best therapist I can be, instead of a professional who perpetuates dangerous practices. Both police officers and therapists are on the front lines of the helping field, working to give aid to those who need it most. I think that it's only right to ask that the Eugene Police Department be required to go through the same training and introspection on an ongoing basis, not periodically, as it is written in Policy 402. To say that the officers involved in the death of Charlie didn't see color is to speak from a place of white privilege. People of color do not have the luxury to take race out of the equation. I'm sure that your experience in the government, one of the many oppressive systems in this country, has shown you some of this. If it hasn't, I implore you to look deeper and ask staff of color if their experience in Eugene is different than yours. This is not a new experience for people of color. If you were unaware before this, I beg of you to educate yourselves about the cases of E.J. Bradford and Philando Castile, just to start. A person of color with a gun is not treated the same as a white person with a gun. They're perceived as a threat no matter what their behavior is, and again, I must remind you, we do not know the actual story of Charlie's behavior.
Thank you. Thank you. Loretta Houston followed by Mike Gianotti.
Loretta Houston in Emily's Ward. As we all know, we're living in extremely severe times and being maxed out on all levels. We tend to normalize most everything and lose perspective. I'm here to talk, I'm here to address 5G technology, which is appalling, that it's being forced as a rollout across the nation. 5G is millimeter-wave technology, which is like what we have in our airports of xraying as we go through the airport. This is extremely irresponsible to force this on all biological systems without being tested. Seattle has said no to this rollout, and I think we, here within our community, need to seriously look at the negative impacts that can affect all of our health, and especially without us having a say or a voice of rejecting this imposing technology on us. 4G technology is adequate. 5G is only for faster speeds to upload entertaining entertainment. There's really no very real good reason, other than these telecommunications corporations wanting to race to put this out so that we can have self-automated driving cars and appliances that are hooked up to the smart meter technology. So I think it's really wise for us to slow down and to look more deeply into the dangers of this technology.
Thank you. Thank you. Mike Gianotti. Mike? Mike here? Nope. No, maybe not. Okay. Victor Odlivak followed by Dag Arnesen.
I've been here a few times before, my name is Victor Odlivak. I live at the top of Lorraine Highway, and this 5G stuff is really, really dangerous. If you look at the FamiliesForSafeMeters.org, you go to that website, go under Home, watch all the videos, it'll take less than 40 minutes. There's one right at the top from Jeremy Johnson about the dangers of the cellphone, the smart meter, 5G. At the very bottom, we reference The Lancet. The Lancet is the most respected medical journal from the United Kingdom in the world. They say cellphones are a huge danger. We just gotta stop it. We know this is dangerous, because when you wanna go through the airport, if you're 10 or under, or if you're pregnant, you can't go in there. So I have a device to measure the electromagnetic field, and on the corner of 15th and Jefferson, right by the entrance to the Fernridge Bike Path, there is a little mini 5G tower there. It registers 20 milli, let's see, let me get this right. It registers 20 millimeters, what's the frequency right? Okay. I'll do the electromagnetic field first. It registers 60 volts per meter, and the box is four meters up. That means it's 240 volts between the box and the ground. And the frequency of the transmission was 20 milliamps per meter squared. And this is really high, and this is exactly what you get inside of those boxes, those little at the airport. So it's gotta stop. Thank you.
Thank you. Dag Arnesen followed by Michael Gannon.
Hi, I'm here representing the Eugene Democratic Socialists of America to talk about the police killing of Charlie Landeros. Eugene DSA extends our deepest condolences to the family and friends of Charlie Landeros, who was gunned down by Eugene police in front of their daughter at the doors of Cascade Middle School Friday morning. Charlie's community organizing and commitment to justice touched many lives in the Eugene area, and their absence will be sorely felt across our community. The details of Charlie's killing are still unclear. Why were police called to the school? Why did they choose to use lethal force? We demand transparency as the investigation into Charlie's killing unfolds. Any and all footage of the incident must be released to the public. Numerous documented cover-ups across the country show that police cannot be trusted to investigate a shooting by their own officers. The city must support an independent investigation into the shooting. In the United States, police kill over 1,000 people each year. Despite making up only 38% of the population, people of color make up 52% of those killed by police. A much lower rate of police killings elsewhere in the world, and successful apprehension of even the most violent people, show that the deaths at the hands of police are avoidable. Now this ongoing national tragedy has visited us here in Eugene. From our grief and rage over this unjust killing, our community must together build a movement to stop this barbarity. We demand accountability for the officers that killed Charlie, and accountability for any and all police or municipal leaders who put into place policies that allowed this tragedy. We demand an end to the violence visited on our community by the police. Thank you.
Thank you. Michael Gannon followed by Roman Anderson.
Good evening, councilors and mayor. I'm going to try to fit some things together that have been said tonight. I wanted to begin with my standard complaint about being a global warrior and wanting to see the crosswalks protected. The failure of the council to respond to my testimony on that on a number of occasions, when it's so obvious that it needs to be dealt with and such a simple thing to do, that it makes me wonder how we can proceed with many of these other complex issues that come before us tonight. I want to tell you that the Sun Sentinel of South Florida, I believe last week or the week before, reported on the police investigation into the shootings at Parkland High School. And some really remarkable pieces of information came out of that investigation, much to the surprise, I think, of most of the people in South Florida. So it behooves the council to examine in great detail the shooting at the middle school in Eugene. And I've seen other newspapers and other communities cover a police shooting with enormous amount of information, and we should not spare any effort to get the maximum of information. I want the CET tax as high as possible and as soon as possible. I wanted to mention the plastic ban because I think it's urgent. I think it's important to recognize the city of Portland in 89 banned Styrofoam, and I want you to recognize that the University of Oregon is pushing expansion into nanotechnology, which is a study of extraordinarily small pieces, which no doubt will float into the atmosphere in Eugene, and we need to be ready for that.
Thank you. Roman Anderson followed by Debbie Jensen.
Roman Anderson, Ward 4, but really a man of the world. I'm here today to talk about CETs. As a bleeding-heart liberal, I'm for them, but as a developer and a home builder, I'm against them. And over the last couple of months, working with the Housing Tools and Strategies Group and also working with the Better Housing Together Forum, I've come to understand that those aren't necessarily mutually exclusive, that we can have CETs and we can support the development community. I believe that there's two things that are important in order to do that. We need to have a progressive tax and not a flat tax. I think that not necessarily should we base that tax on the value of the home, but also on the size of the home. Recently, we've been working on a 7,000-square-foot home, a 5,000-square-foot home, single-family homes, okay? So I think if we want to support 1,000-square-foot homes, 1,500-square-foot homes, then we should base that tax on the size of the house. It also doesn't necessarily need to be 0.3% or 1%. That could rise as the value of the home goes up. We didn't really talk in the working group this morning, or this afternoon, about how those taxes are gonna be implemented. I believe that if we can do that in a way that supports the development community and eliminates bureaucracy and eliminates government fees and roadblocks to development, then I think that it could support the development community. Recently, in the Tools and Strategies Workshop that we worked in, I met somebody from the City of Eugene Development Department, and they informed me about grants that we could use in order to help build development. She emailed those to me, and they were over 100 pages long. And as I joked in that meeting, I got into building houses because I didn't like reading. Okay? So with the CET value, or dollars, I would advocate that those are used to support smaller developers and used to support smaller houses, and used in an effective way that eliminates bureaucracy. Thank you.
Thank you. Debbie Jensen followed by Darcy Martin.
Hi, my name is Debbie Jensen, and I consider myself to be houseless, not homeless, because Oregon is my home. And I've been living in my RV for about two years. It's legally registered and tagged, and on January 10th, the City of Eugene had my motor home towed. What happened is, is on the 4th, I found an orange warning sticker on the ground in front of my RV. I called the number on the ticket, the warning ticket, and no one knew anything about it. On January 7th, a citation was left on my RV windshield that said, "I had three days to move it." On January 10th, I drove my RV around the block and reparked it about three vehicles in front of where I had been, as I was told to do. Two hours later, it was towed. EPD knew nothing, they called back and said that it was at a tow yard. I called them and EPD, and I got conflicting stories or no information at all. It was parked less than two hours when it was towed. The City of Eugene stole my home, and EPD won't let me press any charges. EPD actually called me back and told me that they wanted to send an officer out to do a vehicle stolen report. And before the officer could get there, I got a phone call from the police department saying that they found my vehicle at A&amp;E towing. I asked them, "Why was it there?", and they said, "I don't know, you'll have to ask them." When I called them, they told me that the police department had them tow my vehicle. I am just trying to get my house back. Thank you.
Thank you. Darcy Martin? Yeah, Darcy Martin followed by Teresa Scotchdoppel.
Thank you, Mayor Vennas and the city councilors. This is my first time here. My name is Darcy Martin, and I am in Claire's Ward, in Ward 7. I'm a native of the City of Eugene, I'm a homeowner and a taxpayer. I've been living in Eugene for over 50 years, and I've watched our street corners, our intersections, and store parking lots and downtown areas continue to increase in panhandling activity in the last several years. As a business professional, my industry brings in prospective new homeowners that are appalled when I drive around our city and they see a person residing on each corner with a sign asking for a handout. This is a huge deterrent for any incoming residents and decreases the desire to want to move to our beautiful city. It is embarrassing and is a poor representation of Eugene. My son and his friends ride their bikes to and from school, and they have to pass by panhandlers every morning and every afternoon. My son has said that he's also smelled drugs on his route to school past the panhandlers. I am concerned for children's safety to have to go past street corners with people begging for money and other items. I won't even walk in our own cities downtown along with many of my friends. I am wearing red today because our group is banding together to try and stop Eugene panhandling. Everyone here that is wearing red is with me. I have prepared packets that the city manager said we couldn't give to you till after the meeting. And it is an online petition that says, 1,127 people have signed this petition in two weeks, that we want to stop this panhandling with an ordinance similar to Springfield 6.112, stating that the motorists cannot give out items of value. Thank you.
Thank you. Teresa Scotchdoppel followed by Wayne Martin.
Hi, Teresa Scotchdoppel, I'm living next to where St. Vincent de Paul got the rights to build, and we were having meetings, and we didn't really get to see the designs that well. And I- And I really can't even say what I want from the design because I don't really, I haven't had access to see how it affects the property that is adjacent, where adjacent to. I'm not fond of the way it looks, but compared to the other designs they've had elsewhere, I don't really feel like I have a lot of pull anyway. I do think that we could use garbage cans down near the river area because I've picked up needles, and maybe there'd be more garbage disposed of properly if there was garbage cans down there. Anyway, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Wayne Martin. Is Wayne here? Nope, doesn't look like it. Okay, Jane Catra. Jane, is Jane here? Nope. Okay, Jen Hornaday. And Jen will be followed by Renee Nelson.
Hi, y'all, thanks. I've never done this before, so we'll see how it goes. So I'm Jen Hornaday, and I'm a 10-year owner of Healthy Bees with Healthy Gardens. And I am in one of the back corners of where the new housing development has just been proposed to be building. And we're grateful for a lot of the ideas that St. Vincent de Paul has. One of the ideas that I would like changed is that they have a swale proposed in my organic gardens I've had for 14 years. And not only do I have honeybees, and I've created pesticide-free neighborhoods in Eugene for 10 years now, so I'm really a big responsibility for taking care of our pollinators. Maybe I care too much, but I wish that others would care more. And to put a swale in there is just, feels like a kick in the back for, you know, all of the hard work that I've done. The park next to me is Maynard Park, and we've created that to be pesticide-free also. And I'd like to have more pesticide-free parks. All of the parks in the city would be great if they're all pesticide-free and smoke-free and drug and alcohol-free, and to have that enforced for the health of all people, pets, plants, and pollinators. I'd also like to see pollinator gardens being able to be kept where they're at. I've got organic fruits and berries and trees, and my bees are on the opposite side of that fence right there, where I've got honeybee hives live there. My irrigation well is 10 feet from where this whale is supposedly to be. And I have all my fruit in my gardens, my bees right there. So many pollinators, not just my bees, many native bees, dragonflies, butterflies, ladybugs, hummingbirds. I've watched for 18 years since I've been there and created such a wonderful habitat for that. And I'd like to invite healthy people to this housing development, healthy low-income seniors that really want to have the last bit of their life right by the river, enjoy the river, enjoy the gardens, and be able to have ways that we can all teach the young children also about the importance of having this wonderful River Road garden soil that we have, and to be able to keep that as healthy as possible because I care so much about all the special water and, you know, soil quality that we do have there, and to be able to keep that as best as possible. And I've got so much more to say, but two minutes is up, so thanks, y'all.
Thank you. Renee Nelson, followed by Steve Oakes.
Mayor Venice and councilors, my name is Renee Nelson. I live in Betty Taylor's Ward. I would encourage you to consider banning panhandling in Eugene, similar to what the city of Springfield has imposed. For my profession, I spend the majority of my day driving, and I see the congestion that that creates on our busy cities, streets, not only for cars and traffic flow. And now that we're dealing with the bridge shutdown, that has made a huge impact on congestion in our city. And it creates unsafe situations where people are stopping traffic flow to pass things out the windows to people that are panhandling, as well as pedestrians that are on the sidewalk. I've lived here my whole life. I'm very proud to be a Eugenian. I support the taxes. I contribute to society. I give back to the community. I know a lot of the people in this room all have passion for the homeless and the different people and the cause, but I also know there's some amazing organizations out there that are trying to help those people. And I think if we can continue to support those, but really focus on some of the issues that affect some of us that go to work every day to try to earn a living and make it a safer city, I think it's better for all of us. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Oakes, followed by Alyssa Gilbert.
Oh, good evening, mayor, city councilors. My name is Steve Oakes. I'm Real Estate Development Director with Homes for Good Housing Agency, which is located in Councilor Yez Ward. I'm here to speak in support of fully funding the Commons on MLK Home Application. This project was born from a Poverty and Homelessness Board priority and provides 51 units of permanent supportive housing next to Lane County Behavioral Health on Martin Luther King Boulevard. This Housing First model is a national best practice solution to addressing homelessness. The Commons on MLK Project will create low-barrier housing for people experiencing homelessness that are frequent users of emergency services in our community. It is also a very important piece of the strategy to address homelessness in our community. This project is a result of a special partnership with Lane County, which is providing the land for the project and providing needed capital funds and is committing, and is committed to securing funding for the supportive services. Oregon Housing and Community Services has pledged $3 million, and the project has received financial commitments from Oregon Health Authority, Federal Home Loan Bank, and Trillium Healthcare. In addition, we are working with several other local healthcare providers that are interested in providing both capital and operation funding. A critical piece of the funding puzzle are the requested home funds. Please fully fund and support this important community project, the Commons on MLK. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Alyssa Gilbert, followed by Liv Meyer.
Hi, my name is Alyssa Gilbert. I am a senior at the U of O right now. I am also the campaign coordinator for the Plastics Campaign on campus. As you all know already because of, yeah, this is going to be a lot, but we're college students, so we're excited. A lot of pollution, you know, is coming from things that we don't need, we've known forever that we shouldn't be using, specifically foam cups and takeout containers. There's trash is ending up in our oceans and adding to that lovely garbage patch, killing a lot of birds and marine life, like sea turtles. These animals will eat the polystyrene. And they think their stomachs are full, and then they end up starving, so it's a big problem for our wildlife. Our solution is really that banning is far more effective than cleaning up oceans while still putting pollution out there. Bans like this one really will cut the water off at the tap, as we say, and really make a big difference. I can speak to community support, but we've already had so many supporters tonight because I canvassed on this issue over the summer all over the state of Oregon, but mainly out of our Eugene office. And I spoke to so many citizens who were so supportive and excited about this, but just on campus, we've seen so many students just so excited about being able to make a difference and wanting to sign petitions with us. Just for me personally, I grew up in a rural town in Oregon, going to float the Disheaths River with my mom on the weekends, and it just breaks my heart to see trash like this ending up in our, you know, streams and oceans and lakes. It really does do a lot of damage to not only our environment, but our wildlife. So, yeah, thank you guys so much.
Thank you. Thank you. Liv Meyer, followed by Stefan Struck.
Hi, so I'm Liv. I'm a freshman at U of O. I'm also with Osper students. I'm an intern on our Plastics Campaign. And, yeah, I just want to also reiterate my support for this polystyrene ban. So first, polystyrene was invented in 1947, and I have my grandma, she was born in 1952. And it's just really sad to me that, like, polystyrene never breaks down, really, like, it takes thousands of years. And it's horrible to me that polystyrene, like, the styrofoam cups that we use for five minutes are going to be here and, like, have a longer impact on this world than my grandma, who's just, I love my grandma so much, but, like, this horrible plastic is going to be here thousands of years longer than her, and it's going to have more impacts than she will. So, yeah, Osper students, we are running this Wildlife Over Waste Campaign this term. Yeah, we got our sign right here. So our goal is to get this polystyrene ban here in Eugene and then be, like, leaders for the state of Oregon and eventually get it passed statewide. And on campus, we've been petition, like, getting photo petitions for this campaign. And in just two days, we got 194 students to take pictures with our signs and say that they support this ban. So there's broad student support. And then we've also gotten 12 restaurants to sign on and say that they support this ban. So people that say, like, maybe it's not the best because businesses will dislike it, we have proof that businesses support this ban. So we really hope that you guys do get this ban passed and hope that it'll help us get it passed in the state later on. Thank you.
Thank you. Stefan Struck, followed by Rachel McDade.
All right, good day, everybody. First city council meeting of 2019, and I really appreciate everyone coming down here. It's been a great crowd. People always say, "Why don't more people come down to city council?" It doesn't look like there's enough people there. So, you know, just huge thank you to everyone who came here down to speak and all the people standing outside who couldn't get in here because there's not enough room, but there are so many people outside that are all so eager to come in next time, and we're all looking forward to that. So, Stefan Struck, that's my name. Just the other day, I was getting some coffee, and the guy at the coffee shop, he said, "Excuse me, am I speaking to Stefan Struck? Am I making Stefan Struck's coffee this morning, today? It is an honor, sir." And really, we have the best voters in this city who really deserve to be listened to. And he made a great coffee. That was a great morning. So there's a lot of people that are upset because not enough is being done about the homeless, and there's really simple solutions to that, like not getting upset when they drink. I was at a place that didn't let you drink after 10:00 one time, and the staff had to shower me off because I drank three bottles of wine and 10 glasses Sangria just too fast because I was trying to follow the rules. It backfired. So let the homeless drink. You know, there's a reason they're homeless. They lack self-control. And I like to wash myself. I do pretty well usually, so long as there's reasonable rules and accommodations. Besides that, we really need this city hall worked on. It's been almost five years, and there's just no construction. Like, you could literally just drop a brick down there, and it's more than has been done in five years, so that's not much to catch up on. But I know you're all working on it, and I'd like to see more smiles. That's some great smiles we saw about those turtles. A smile is an expression that lets others know that you're happy about what's going on. So more smiles and a better attitude in 2019. Thank you all very much. Vote Struck.
Thank you. Rachel McDade, followed by Melody Delorme.
Hi, my name is Rachel McDade. I'm a business owner here in Eugene, and I'm here today to speak about the River Road Housing Project. I'm also a voice for my son who had a 7:30 bedtime. He's seven years old, and I also have a 17-month-old son. And we love frequenting this park, and we love seeing development in our city that really serves our community, and we urge you to make decisions in that way that are focused on a comprehensive way for our public to access and for people to be supported within whatever structure is, is put there. And definitely, please consider the neighborhood that's already established there. One of my son's biggest complaints is that he doesn't want to go to the river because there's people that use drugs there, and he finds needles. And for me to hear that as a mother of, hearing that from my seven-year-old's voice, that's heartbreaking, actually. And so whatever structure goes in there, just really, I hope that you have the therapy gardens, like, the, the way for people to really heal themselves because that is such a special place for so many people, and I appreciate your time today and hearing me, and my son appreciates that as well, and maybe he'll be here next time. Thanks.
Thank you. Melody Delorme, followed by Stephen Carson.
Hi, I'm Melody Delorme, and I'm in Mr. Evans Ward. I just wanted to speak to you about the panhandling in the Eugene area and ask that you adopt the same ordinance that the Springfield has adopted. We see it everywhere we go, and it's not that I'm against people asking for help. I've, you know, helped in several different ways, but when they're impeding traffic or coming at your car or making motions to you when you have your grandkids sitting in the car with you, it's just not okay. They, I've seen them go up and relieve themselves because they're sitting out panhandling for so long, and they're relieving themselves in public. And a lot of people will say that, "Oh, you're just against the homeless," and people that need help, and that's not true either. I've taken out of my own pocket and fed the homeless for many years, and my in-laws did that for many years before me. So we've stopped along the roads, we've given people warm meals, and they've just honestly told us, "We don't need anything else. Thank you for the food, but I just am trying to get enough money to go to the Winco and buy me some more alcohol." So I think that we have a lot of assistance out there for people, and I would ask that you adopt the same thing that Springfield has adopted, so thank you.
Thank you. Stephen Carson, followed by Monique Hall.
I've lived in Eugene most of my life. I went to North Eugene High School. I have to say, I didn't feel safe with a police officer there. I remember the officer's door opened directly into the cafeteria, and it was a constant, and the feeling of surveillance and suspicion was a constant source of stress that frequently disrupted my study. The constant awareness of a visibly armed person was another tax on, was one of many taxes on my focus, growing up poor. And this was as, this was as a nerdy white kid. I can't imagine what it's like for non-white students to have to go to school and walk past a police officer armed with a gun or a pain compliance weapon. After another person of color, a student's parent was gunned down by the police not five days ago. I can't, I don't know what it's like to, to sit under the gaze of a police officer knowing the impunity with which police brutalize and murder people of color in this country, in this state and in the city. Police have no place in their, in our schools, make an unsafe learning environment, they escalate what should be disciplinary actions into criminal charges, criminalizing poor minority students. We need to get the cops out of our schools. Thank you.
Thank you. Monique Hall, followed by Paul Vandermeij.
Hello, I'm Monique Hall, Zelenka Ward. I'd like to express my concern regarding the negative impacts of 5G and the installation of smart meters on our homes. Please dedicate the necessary time to review the current research and consider saying no to 5G to protect the health, to protect the health of our community and all biological life, including our trees, pollinators, birds, children, and elders. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Vandermeij, and you're the final one.
Good evening, council. My name is Paul Von der Meiden, and I represent Harlow Neighbors Association in Ward 4. I'm here to show our support and solidarity for the Homes for Good project of the, the Housing First that you're looking at tonight for approval. It's a, it's the same community project that, the, it's also known as Comments on MLK, and it's funded at 12, it's got a $12 million budget. That's a huge amount of money, and I, we just want to congratulate all parties involved with stewarding this huge amount of money to the lowest, I guess, income sector of our community. And that shows some, some support. I'm also here on behalf to recommend the council's approval of a really important project to go ahead, and we want to send a message that we can't wait to welcome up to 50 new neighbors with permanent addresses and some righteous Harlow friendship. Thank you.
Thank you. And that is our final public testimony in the form. There are councilors who wish to respond to anything they've heard. Counselor Cyret, Counselor Clark, take it away.
So, thank you, everyone who came to speak, a lot of important topics, and I'm not going to take time to respond to every single one. I'm, it's probably not the highest priority, but since Mr. Gannon has come several times to talk about the crosswalk pedestrian safety, I have been paying attention to your testimony and appreciate the fact that you shared that pedestrians are supposed to have the right of way in our state, and many drivers don't comply with that. And the challenge is that, obviously, we can't monitor every pedestrian crossing in the city, and And in my view, a big contributing factor is the fact that we do not require driver education in this state. You can have to pass the driver's test. That's it. So, I grew up in California. Pedestrians have the right-of-way there. We had mandatory driver's ed in school, and pedestrians would step in the street and traffic would stop. I mean, it really was the way it is. I don't know if it's still that way. But we can speak to our chief about the traffic enforcement team. They can set up stings at certain intersections and start to enforce that. It could lead to a shift, but it's going to be a long process to get people to start to pay attention to that. So, just wanted to let you know, we are listening.
Councilor Clark.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to say thank you for all those who came and spoke tonight, for those of you urging us to pass a mirrored ordinance to the Springfield ordinance. We did... I made a motion earlier tonight, and we did pass 6 to 2, the idea of bringing such a thing back for a public hearing. So, I can't say that I know when that will be, which public hearing that will be, but I would estimate it would likely be... It won't be in April. It could be in February at this point, but it's probably February or March at this point, 3rd Monday. And then usually, we take up issues a week or two after that. I see the act manager here furiously looking through the schedule, so maybe she can clarify for me.
It won't be March. We'll definitely get back to it with the date. We've been perusing the calendar, and it's pretty full through the break period, and something will be following the break.
Thank you very much. But I just wanted to let you know, thank you for being here and for your input.
Any other council comments?
I just... I mentioned this at the 5:30 session, and I want to say it again to the folks who have come and commented about their distress over the shooting at Cascade Middle School. And we share your distress over this. We do have a protocol for this. It's... The response is mandated by state statute. The state statute calls for a multi-jurisdictional deadly force task force. So, that task force is now doing their work. They report to the district attorney. When they are done with that report, our Eugene Police Department and our independent police auditor can then step in and also do a review. And they can bring in our civilian review board, who would also look over that. So, I appreciate the anxiety, the fear, the impatience, the desire for answers. And it is established by state statute how we proceed from here. So, we are following that law, and there will be more information to follow. So, thank you for testifying on that. And I believe that brings us to a close of the public forum, and we're ready for a regular business meeting. And I turn to my new council president on the consent calendar.
I move to approve the items on the consent calendar.
Second. All in favor? 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8. Thank you very much. Okay, our item for action today, approval of resources for the housing affordable to low-income persons. I believe we have staff going to give a little introduction to this.
We do. I just have a couple of brief comments, Mayor. Thank you. So, each year, the City of Eugene requests proposals for affordable housing projects to advance the goals established in the Eugene-Springfield Consolidated Plan. This year's housing, RFP, offered federal and local subsidies as well as a land bank site located on River Road. Tonight, city council will consider the staff recommendation to support two projects that would create 103 new units of affordable housing. Stephanie and Ellen will provide a brief overview of the guiding goals, RFP process, and staff recommendation for support of these projects. And that, I'll turn it over to Ellen and Stephanie.
Good evening, Mayor and council. We're getting a presentation that we're going to go through very briefly. We know we've had a long forum, so... But we just want to briefly go through a few points before you consider this action tonight. So... Okay, great. So, my name is Stephanie Jennings, and I manage the Housing Opportunities Team. I wanted to provide you just a little bit of context for the actions that you'll consider tonight. Ellen Mae Galloway is our Housing Finance Analyst, and she's the lead staff person that manages our Housing Request for Proposals process. So, the... This process is guided by the Eugene-Springfield Consolidated Plan, which is a guiding plan that council adopts once every five years. This plan guides the use of our federal funds that are received by the city from HUD. These funds include the Home Investment Partnership Program and the Community Development Block Grant Resources. In 2015, council prioritized use of these funds to support affordable housing, human service, and economic prosperity programs. Okay, great.
Batteries.
I'll just keep talking. So, we...
She got it.
Yeah, just move the battery a little. There you go.
Thank you. So, through this plan, one of the most significant goals of this plan is to increase the supply of affordable housing. The goal set in this plan is a five-year goal to increase the supply by 650 units. This does not reflect the need within the community. This reflects what we thought was possible at that point in time, given the level of federal funds available to us. Another guiding plan is the Envision Eugene, which suggests that we need to provide housing affordable to all income levels within the city. Together, we use the federal funds, which is the home and CDBG funds, with our local resources to try to impact as many units and projects as possible. I wanted to just provide you a little bit of a progress report thus far towards our five-year goal. So, as you can see, 152 units have been completed. 83 units are in progress. 103 have been proposed through the Housing RFP and the actions that you are considering this evening. We are still... We have not yet completed or started an additional 312 units to get to the goal of 650 units. With that, I'd like to turn it over to Ellen Mae Galloway, who will review the resources in more detail, discuss the Housing RFP process, the projects, and the recommendations for your consideration. Thank you.
Thank you, Stephanie. The federal home funds are received annually from HUD to the Eugene-Springfield Home Consortium. They're used for acquisition of existing housing and development of new housing for... that's affordable to low-income households. They're offered annually to affordable housing developers through a Request for Proposals process, or RFP. And the Eugene-Springfield Governing Board makes the final decisions for home funding. Mayor Venice and Councilor Pryor represent Eugene on the governing board, and Mayor Lumberg and Councilor Van Gordon represent Springfield. The Land Acquisition for Affordable Housing Program is also called the Land Bank Program. It was implemented by the City of Eugene way back in 1979 and has resulted in 922 units of affordable housing distributed throughout Eugene. City council approved the land bank site on River Road in November 2015. It's located on the east side of River Road, just north of East Maynard Ave and south of Howard Ave. It was acquired with community development block grant funds, and those funds require that the property be developed within five years of acquisition. Through the 2018 Housing RFP, Eugene made available that city-owned property on River Road in addition to nearly $1.5 million in federal home funds. Local systems development charge exemptions were also offered through the RFP and the opportunity to apply for a low-income rental housing property tax exemption. Eugene received four proposals, three of which were for the River Road site, and one was for another project in the Harlow neighborhood that you heard about during public forum. The Evaluation Committee scored and ranked the proposals in December. The Evaluation Committee included Councilor Pryor, Councilor Van Gordon, Isabel Matthews, John Borowski, Zoe York. River Road Community Organization was represented by Pat Riley, who's here tonight. And Harlow Neighborhood was represented by Tiffany Van der Zanden. Extensive outreach was performed for the city-owned property on River Road prior to the acquisition in 2015, and that continued through the RFP process. We met with River Road Community Organization in their general meetings. We met with the adjacent neighbors. We did a tour of existing affordable housing developments. And when the proposals were received, the developers presented those proposals to the neighborhood. In addition, River Road Community Organization had a subcommittee of neighbors that actually produced a report of neighborhood priorities that they provided to the potential affordable housing developers to really make sure that the developers knew what the neighborhood priorities were and what they expected for the proposals. The proposals were also posted on our website, since they were submitted in November. The Evaluation Committee reviewed and scored the proposals using six criteria: project concept and design, site feasibility, target population and services, cost benefit, financial feasibility, and finally, organizational experience and performance. The River Road proposals were ranked by the Evaluation Committee in the following order. The River Road Affordable Housing was scored the highest, St. Vincent de Paul's proposal. The second highest score was River Connection from Cornerstone Community Housing. And the third highest was Harmony Court from Northwest Real Estate Capital Corp. out of Boise, Idaho. We also had another proposal for Just Eugene Home Funds, and that was the Commons on MLK Permanent Supportive Housing Project from Homes for Good. There's more information about each of these proposals in your meeting materials. And as I mentioned, they are all on our website, on the community development website. But for the sake of time this evening, we're just going to present the two highest-scoring proposals that are recommended for funding. This is the River Road Affordable Housing proposal, which was the highest score for the River Road site. This is 52 units proposed, which 47 would be for households earning no more than 50% of area median income, five units for households earning no more than 30% of area median income, plus one onsite manager unit. Of the total, five units would be for victims of domestic violence. They've proposed one, two, and three-bedroom units in two- and three-story buildings. One reason for the high score on this proposal was the way the developer addressed the neighborhood priorities. For example, with gardening opportunities, energy-efficient building, and disaster resiliency, including their community building, which is built to... proposed to be built to essential facility standards, which for emergency preparedness, including a large storage room for emergency supplies, a backup generator. And as you can see in the center, there are solar panels on the roof. The other proposal is the Commons on MLK, which I'm sure you all have heard so much about, on Lane County property adjacent to the Lane County Behavioral Health and Community Health Center. This is across Martin Luther King Jr. Boulevard from Otten Stadium. Homes for Good is proposing 51 studio apartments in a four-story building for households earning no more than 30% of area median income, and it would be permanent supportive housing targeted to persons experiencing chronic homelessness. The model is to get people into housing first and then provide them extensive services to help their needs. So, there would be a full-time services staff onsite 24/7. They have some funding already committed to the project, including Lane County donating the land and other resources and funds from State Mental Health Housing, Oregon Health Authority, and healthcare providers. This is a great partnership between the health and housing sectors. As I mentioned, the total funds available through the RFP were nearly $1.5 million. And that is not sufficient home funds to meet the requests for both of those proposals. Because of the community development block grants that were used to acquire the River Road land bank site, we have the requirement that that property be developed within five years. So, that project was the priority that we set in the RFP, which means that the Commons on MLK project has a gap of just over $150,000. But the city does have a low-income housing fund, which is a small resource of old funds that have been recycled over time and provided for situations like this. Because of an old loan that just got repaid last year, there's actually enough funds in the low-income housing fund to provide the gap financing and fully support the Commons on MLK project. Tonight, city council is asked to award the city-owned property on River Road and approve the use of home funds for the River Road Affordable Housing proposal, approve the use of federal home funds and low-income housing funds to fully support the Commons on MLK proposal. And later in 2019, we will ask the city council to consider the low-income rental housing property tax exemption for the River Road Affordable Housing proposal. Systems development charge exemptions will be awarded for both of these proposals. And just as a reminder, the Home Consortium Governing Board would make final funding decisions for the home funds on January 29th. And with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. So, I have Councilor Clark and then Councilor Cyret in the queue.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you very much for that presentation. That was wonderful. I think I heard you at a couple of different points there talk about the things that we do in affordable housing to minimize the expenses. And I think the two you mentioned that I heard most clearly was talking about the savings that are required from land banking. In other words, buying stuff when it costs less money, buying land when it costs less money. And since a government agency doesn't pay the taxes on it, we can carry it for a while and then be able to use that for purchase. So, we're saving money on the land cost. And then I heard you talking about the discounted SDCs and property taxes, right?
That's right.
So, it seems to me that you've just said that building affordable housing means we need to minimize the land cost and the exterior governmental fee and tax cost. Is that what I... More or less? That's an effective way to build affordable housing?
If we want to subsidize to the point where the very lowest-income people can afford the rent. So, the more subsidy that we put into a development, the lower the rents can be.
I was just making a larger point that I made a little earlier during our 5:30 session, that two biggest costs, and it's exactly what you're doing, is you're working to lower the land cost and the external costs. And it's what this council should do, instead of adding the costs, in order to make housing more affordable for everyone. Thank you for letting me make that point and become an annoyance to my colleagues again. But how many units are in the Cornerstone Community Housing proposal?
There were 61 units proposed.
So, I was under the impression that we were moving forward with that proposal at some point along the way. Are we making up the 10 units we're losing?
There are many factors that went into the Evaluation Committee's scoring of the proposals. And perhaps Councilor Pryor can talk more about the scoring process because he was...
I'm not as much interested in the scoring as we had an opportunity to build 10 more units. Are we making them up somehow?
No.
How come? Out of curiosity.
Two projects competing for the same site, only one could be selected.
Was... Because I honestly don't know here. Weren't they designated at one point along the way for that site? Weren't they... Weren't they in... I mean, weren't they previously chosen to be able to develop that site?
Not that I recall, no.
I misunderstood that somehow. I misunderstood that somehow. Thank you, ladies, very much. I appreciate it.
Counselor Cyret.
Counselor Clark, I think you might be thinking of another parcel of land on River Road that was owned by Homes for Good and has since been sold to a private developer and is the subject of the Lombard Apartments protest emails we've been receiving.
Just talking about this one.
So, I'm supportive of both motions before us. I just wanted to make sure, and I see Mr. Kearns from St. Vincent de Paul is still in the room. I don't know if he heard the two community members, three community members, but I think two had specific concerns about just some of the impacts of the development, the St. Vincent de Paul development on River Road, and specifically, the community member who spoke about the beehives and the impact of a swale that, I guess, is going to displace some of the gardening that she's been doing. And I recognize that there was a pretty robust process here with the neighbors and River Road Community Organization. So, I feel pretty confident that a lot of input was given and received, and things were adjusted with the project, but I'm just making another plea to see if the developer, St. Vincent de Paul, assuming we approve this and it moves forward, can try to mitigate the impact, particularly on that one neighbor, with the organic gardening that she spoke to. I think that would be a very positive thing to do as a new neighbor along River Road. Thanks.
Any other comments or questions? All right, yes.
Thank you, Claire. I think that would be great.
Okay.
I mean Counselor Cyret.
All right, are we ready? Do you need to comment, Counselor Pryor?
Yeah, I just want to reinforce everything that they did and basically give a shout-out to the staff, who did a very robust outreach program. And when Terry came up earlier to talk about that, he was really contrasting it with some of the experiences he's had in other venues, and how much he appreciated the staff's outreach in making this process as smooth as possible. And I would also reinforce that it is in St. Vinnie's interest to make sure that the neighbors around the project are as compatible and satisfied as they can be, so that outreach will continue. And the project, one of the Neighborhood Association people came to the Evaluation Committee and said, of the two projects, this is the one we prefer, not just because there were fewer units, which they did bring up, but also because they liked the design and the ability for the community facility, the common room, would be made available to the neighborhood in the event of a disaster, and they appreciated that as well.
Counselor Clark, did you have...
Yeah, I did. Just one more. That's actually a project that's in my ward, in Ward Five, as I understand it, in the north of the Belt Line and east of River Road. Is that correct?
No, it's actually south of the Belt Line. It's in Counselor Cyret's ward.
I saw it go like this, too.
I'm wondering, Counselor Clark, if you were thinking about Delta Court, which was a project that was previously awarded to Cornerstone Community Housing, and they had an interest in doing a Phase Two on that development, which, that was a proposal that Council approved last year. Due to some challenges with their state funding, they were unable to proceed with that development, but we've been in discussions with them about how they might like to kind of develop that property in another way, and so they're still working on their plans for that, but I do expect that we'll come back at some point in time for that second phase of Delta Court.
Thank you very much for helping me see both of those projects correctly, and I appreciate that. I don't get to work with this every day, so forgive me, my level of understanding of each of the details on some of these is cursory at best, so I appreciate that. But I will tell you that I, for one, am in favor of the idea of the less regimented approach to building affordable housing than I am the more innovative one, okay? And the dude who's making houses over there by St. Mary's, the fourth, five-story stick built, what's, you know which one I'm talking about? Off West 11. What's that?
11th and Lincoln, across from Munich Court.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The more that we look at innovative approaches for doing this, combining with landowners maybe perhaps willing to donate land as a part of a larger effort to develop another part of land that they own, anything that we can do to combine with community members to look at the less traditional and more innovative approach to building affordable housing, I'm going to be strongly in favor of, and there are several models for that. So, I just want to encourage you to give every consideration to that kind of approach as well, not to take anything away from St. Vincent de Paul over there, Chief. You know, they do fantastic work, but I think that's an answer for us that can work as time goes on, so, thank you.
Okay, we ready for a vote? All right, you want to put the first one on the table?
I move to award the property of 1505 to 1525 River Road and approve use of $72,000 in home funds for the construction of River Road Affordable Housing Project as proposed by St. Vincent de Paul.
The number was 725. I second.
725,000.
Yes. Okay, all in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? Excellent. Okay, none opposed. Next one?
I move to approve use of $749,534 in home funds and $150,466 in low-income housing funds for the construction of the Commons on MLK as proposed by Homes for Good Housing Agency.
Second.
All in favor? One, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight? And it passes. Thank you so much. Thank you, everyone. Thanks for that report, and we are adjourned.